I'd like to welcome everyone to council meeting this evening. It's a work session. All council members are present. Our pledge of allegiance will be led by Chief Smith and our opening remarks by Diana Anderson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our dear Father in heaven, we are very grateful to be gathered together this evening as citizens of Pleasant Grove. We're grateful for this town, we're grateful for our friends and our neighbors, and we ask that thou would please bless us tonight, that we will be inspired, that we will mindful, creative, to have a discussion civilly and openly.
Thank you. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No, there's not.
Counsel, entertain a motion.
I make the motion, Mayor, that we approve the agenda as written.
Second.
We have a motion by Ben, a second by Eric. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, I'm going to turn some time over to Administrator Darrington to present some Leadership Academy awards.
The Academy Awards, we're not going to try to flub this one out.
Why not?
Just let me give you a little background. We've done this five times now. In fact, we just started our sixth iteration of the Leadership Academy. What it is, is we take about 10 employees from various departments, and we have a training, it turns into a training in some ways, but we have them read a book. The book is a real-life story of some guys that get stranded on near Antarctica and kind of their journey, this was in the early 1900s, their journey to survival. During that time, they had a lot of adversity, but because of that, they rose to the occasion, and there's a lot of lessons that we could learn in that book. So, we read the book, we talk about the leadership qualities that were prevalent in the book, and then we take those qualities, we divide them up, one amongst each person that's in the academy, and then they'll take an hour, we meet over the course of about eight weeks. We'll take an hour and they'll train everybody else on a particular leadership quality. It's been a great, it's great to be able to work with our employees on this level. I'm always just really impressed with when it comes time for them to present, which a lot of them are a little hesitant, not super excited, maybe they can vouch for that, but they do such a great job. And when we talk about rising to the occasion, they, we've had some really good training on various leadership qualities. So, with that, we do a certificate of completion, graduation for these, and so I'll just read off their names, and if they're here, they can come up and get their certificate. Andrew Peterson with the Parks, I don't know if Andrew's here. Cindy Bean, Cindy's in administration, pays her, she's accounts payable. Cody Jolly, okay, we'll give him a pass. Dave Thurston, Dave's out at our cemetery. John Clayton, John's one of our police officers.
Is he working?
Oh, is he? He's working, thank you. Linda Hells is in our community development, she said she wouldn't be able to come tonight. Lindsay Webb, Lindsay's in the P E, and I would tell you all the things she does, but I don't have that much time. She's a catch-all, gets to do a lot of things for us. Mario Gonzalez, Mario's in our engineering department, so. I did, I signed him. Last time I forgot. And then Tasia Aspwin, Tasia's, works in our legal department with Tina. So, those were our graduates, if we want to give them a hand. And I told them they were free to leave after they got their certificate, unless they wanted to stay.
Should we pause so they can leave? You guys can leave if you want.
No, like, really. Congrats.
So, I'm seeing item number six is to consider awarding a bid. Today's a work session.
We noticed it as an action item.
Okay. All right. So, let's turn it over to Marty. Where'd you go?
Mayor, this is the recommended award for the Black Hawk Waterline Project up off of 15th East, Black Hawk, and to Black Hawk Circle. So, the, there were 12, well, actually 13 bidders, one was non-responsive, so we had a great pool of bidders, great bids. The low bidder came in at 399,000 something, and our engineer's estimate was three, 442,000. So, we're about 10% under the engineer's opinion of cost, so we're good that way, and we're recommending award of this to Any Hour Services. And we've checked their references and their license, and would recommend that.
Okay. Any questions?
It's not Any Hour Services, don't get them confused, they are a construction company. They're newer on the construction field, but they've got, they've kind of a break-off of a, another construction company that is well-known, and we know the guys that are actually working on the, in that company, so.
I was teasing, but thank you.
Well, when we first thought, we're like, hold on, Any Hour Services, don't they do plumbing? But, not water lines, but anyway, so, yeah, we got that clarified fairly quickly.
Questions for Marty? Besides the plumbing?
Can I just say one thing about, so what we've done this year, we've, you'll notice that it's also on the three-year road plan to reconstruct this. This is one of the coordinated utility road projects that we were doing, and the road work, you'll be seeing, got a lot coming out this next month. We've got four pre-bid, or pre, yeah, pre-bid meetings on the 30th of March, and that'll, this will be one of them, the road project, for this project will be part of that. We're bidding all of the road projects under, for one contractor, one larger contractor. We're hoping that'll save us a little money. So, we've got 9th South, 7th South, and this project, and then we're talking about Orchard Drive, adding that as well. So, it's going to be a very, very busy spring. This is one of the projects of the four that are going to keep us really busy.
Great. Okay, any further discussion? If not, we'll entertain a motion, and please use the language that's included.
Mayor, I make the motion that we award Any Hour Inc. the Black Hawk Drive Waterline Replacement Project with additive A in the amount of 399,253 and 20 cents.
Second.
We have a motion by Diana, a second by Ben. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Motion carries. Okay, now we're ready for our discussion on road funding.
All right. So, I have given counsel some hard copies, handouts. I also, as we talk about these handouts, I'll put them up on the screen so people can follow along as we're talking about them. Before we get into too much, I'll just give you a little bit of history as to, at least since 2010, that's when I started, so that's my best recollection of the history. I know a couple of years prior to me arriving, we had a bond taken out to do a portion of roads. Up to that point, and really what we've had in the last few years, our major part of our road funding has been through Class C road monies. We also refer to these as gas tax monies. So, when you go to the pump and you pay per gallon, you pay a tax per gallon that goes to the state of which, I think it's 70/30 if I remember right, 70% goes to the state, 30% goes to cities, and then it's, the cities, it's distributed according to your population into your lane miles, and so there's a formula in which we receive these funds. In the past, that number for us has always been in about the $900,000 range. It's interesting, when gas prices go up, then people tend to buy less gas, and so we see a reduction in our monies that we receive because it's based on per gallon use. When gas prices go down, we'll see a little bit of an uptick in our Class C monies because more people are tending to buy gas. What has happened now with hybrid vehicles, electric vehicles, natural gas vehicles, there's people now that are using the roads that aren't paying the gas tax. And so, in some ways, that, and I think they're working on correcting that formula to make sure that it's something that could be fair for everyone across the board, but that's been our major source of revenue. When we bonded in 2008, and we had about, I'd say, 950,000 in Class C monies, our bond payment was $750,000 a year. So, we did a bunch of road projects up front, street maintenance, I want to say, I don't know, Lynn, if you can remember, 4 million, 4.2 million in road projects, which in turn, we just paid for over the next 10 years. In fact, we're still paying, we, our last bond payment is, is our next fiscal year. So, over that time, we got a lot of good roads done in 2008, 9, and 10, and then from 2010 on, because we've had limited Class C monies, we haven't put as much towards roads because we're making that bond payment. In 2013, when we started discussing in our retreat, and we talked about the priorities of the city, the public safety building, and roads were the two priorities that rose to the top. The council at that time instructed us as staff to work on a funding mechanism to get some more money into roads. We, as we were looking at that, Dean, our finance director at the time, noticed that one of our franchise fees that is paid, the city can collect up to 6%, and we were only collecting 5% on one of those fees. And so, if we increase that, that extra 1%, it was going to generate an extra $195,000 in revenue. And so, the council said, if we're going to do that increase, then we want to earmark that money all towards roads. So, that was the decision at the time. So, that 195,000 is actually general fund money, could be used for anything. Our councils at the time said, we want that to go towards roads. And since that time, that 195 has always been going towards roads. Last year, as we were discussing road fee and, and all these different things, so, one thing that was requested of staff was to go back through the budget, line item by line item, to see in the budget if there are some funds available that we could take out of our line items to put towards roads. And so, we went through that exercise. Denise and I, sorry, I'm battling a little bit of a cold here, so. We met with each department, we went line item by line item with each department, and we were able to free up $130,000 in general fund money that was earmarked towards roads. And so, that was the exercise we did last year. That 130,000 is an ongoing revenue now, to a point where we have about $325,000 of revenue of general fund money earmarked specifically for roads. So, that's on top of our Class C money, which our Class C money still has one last bond payment, and then all that Class C money will be free and clear. We had a study done in the meantime, I can't remember what year, 2012, Marty was working for J U B at the time. The first thing we did is we went through all of our roads and assigned them a pavement condition index, which is a number between 0 and 100, with 100 being a brand-new road, and I don't know what 0 is, a dirt road.
Might as well be.
Not a good road. And so, we assigned a pavement condition index on each, each street in Pleasant Grove. And then we went back to Marty and said, if we wanted to get all of our streets in a good condition, which is 70, 70 or higher, how much money would we need each year in order to accomplish that? So, the number that was given back to us was, we need $3.8 million a year if we are going to, in essence, get on top of our road situation and get every road in Pleasant Grove City to a 70 or higher. Now, that's 3.8 million a year over the next 20 years. That was the estimate. So, with that, Marty, did you want to revisit that just slightly with a couple of slides and show us a little bit what you, just a reminder as to what we discussed at that time?
What this, I thought this was a good slide to bring back. It's been a number of years since we've talked about this in-depth, but essentially what the goal of this graph was to show kind of where each amount of funding would take us if we allocated that much funding per year, where we would be at the end of 20 years. I don't know why that's not going to my slide presentation there. Let's just leave it at that. So, at the end of 20 years, what it's saying is, where would we be if we spent $1 million a year? So, right now, at this time, this was in 2012, we started here at about 64 PCI value as our average, and essentially, for the first few years, we were holding steady, but then you can see with $1 million a year, that our whole road system average would be approximately, it was about 40, I guess it's probably 34 or so after 20 years. So, we would drop from a 64 to be a 34 average PCI throughout the city, which is poor felled state. Kind of the breakdown that Scott was talking about is, is that from 100 to 70 is your excellent and good roads, where you'd receive a seal coat. 70 to 50, you'd do an overlay. 50 to 25, you'd do a milling overlay, and then under 25, you'd reconstruct. So, most of our roads would be in this range, that you'd have to do a milling overlay, a fairly expensive treatment in order to get it done. So, if you then look at these other, these are just $1 million increases, so 1, 2, 3, and 4, what we said is, to get them above 70, we would need to be right in this area here at about $3.8 million, what was estimated. And that was to get them there over 20 years and have an average PCI value above 70, is probably in the 74 range. I think that's critical, kind of as we look at it, we just had, one of the things that we kind of discussed at that time, that I think would be valuable to look at, is we said, okay, if we did $4 million a year, essentially, how many roads would be bad after 20 years? And essentially, what it, what it showed was about 4% of the roads. So, we would, we would have our average above a 70, we would still have a few bad roads after 20 years. But the thing is, is if you looked at some of these other ones, if you look at $1 million a year for the next 20 years, we would have 60% of our roads in a very poor-to-felled state after 20 years. If you do $2 million a year, 44% of the road would be very poor-to-felled after 20 years, and 3 million brought it to 25. 4 million just was about the right number that brought us to where in 20 years, we were able to get our system up to a really good state. So, that's kind of the discussion that was had. There were other alternatives looked at, and obviously, we kind of settled on that 3.8 number as the recommended amount to achieve, so.
Marty, how many of our roads are very poor or failing today? Number seven?
So, at the time, we did it in 2012, there were very, there were some probably in the 2 to 4%. That, since 2012, so five years down the road, I'd have to look at the new numbers, but it's probably in the range of about 6 to 7%. About every year, we drop, I noticed between 2012 and 2013, we drop about four PCI, so Payment Condition Index points per year, based on that, and it'll accelerate if you don't take care of those roads. When those roads get on kind of the later years of their life, they really deteriorate fast, and you have bigger problems quicker. And so, that was one of our biggest concerns when we did the study, was that we had 40% of the roads that were kind of right on that edge of just poor, not, not very poor or felled, but they were on that edge, and they were starting to fall into the felled, which you notice from that, that treatment cost, it went from $3 in a, in a poor state to do a milling overlay, up to $6 to do a full reconstruct, where you have to take out the base and redo it. And so, that was kind of the, the focus then, was, you know, we need to try to address this big group of roads that are in a, a poor state. They're not very poor or felled, but they're in a poor state, and they're working their way towards that very poor, expensive treatment, so.
Any other questions for Marty then?
Marty, did any of that account for inflation?
Yes, the, the numbers did account for inflation, and I'm trying to remember back. There was an inflation factor put into the adjustment to figure out how much we needed over the years. So, I believe the $4 million was a consistent $4 million every year for those 20 years, based on an adjusted inflation number.
We know, we, do we have an idea of the amount of traffic or use that has increased on the roads over time? So, if you just took population, for example, when we moved in, population was X, now it's 2.5X, and, and there's a certain number of vehicles associated with that population, and that might be different today than it was when we moved in.
Sure.
Do we have any metrics or data that correlate how usage has taken place on the roads during the same period of time, the historical?
The only thing I would say we could do, no, we haven't looked at it directly, Mayor, but, you know, through old transportation master plans, we could, we could look back through a couple of them and kind of get an idea of what the trend has been from the 90s through, through our, our, 2012. So, we could kind of look at that, what the changes, but no, we haven't done a comparative study to see what those increased. And I, and I think one of the things that's critical on that is, if you, if you look at pavement design, the real critical factor isn't necessarily cars, even though that plays some, some part in it. It's really your truck traffic, your heavy equipment, those types of things that really have the biggest impact on the road. So, that truck increase of truck traffic, when you start having a lot of businesses and through traffic that, that creates heavy loads, that's when you really start to see the deterioration of the roads, not when you have light cars and vehicles traveling on them.
When you look at the roads that we have in our city that are considered to be poor, in poor condition today, are they located in the main areas where we have heavy truck use, or are they located in the neighborhoods where you have light use?
Some of the higher poor, the very poor ones are in residential areas, and they're, they're largely that way because they haven't been touched for 30 and 40 years. As far as really treatments, they've, they've just been, essentially, just nothing has been done on them, and so they just continue to degrade, and, and to a point that they've, they've actually done really well for their, for what they were at the time they were constructed and all of that, but at the same time, nothing's been done on them to help preserve them or keep them.
Anybody else have questions?
Can you disconnect, Marty, and I'll connect you?
What's that?
I'm just asking Marty to disconnect so I can connect.
Mayor, I was looking at an interesting, so just looking back through some information I'd received, and I was looking at some costs of projects that were bid in 1978, 1976, when I was born, and I was looking at those costs. It was really interesting to see, right now, for the same inch and a half overlay, they were paying about 20 cents a square foot, and we today are probably paying about four times that much for the same work. So, over 40 years of time, you see quite, you know, that regular escalation of construction costs and things. So, I thought that was really interesting when looking at that today.
Well, for some reason, it wants to reload everything. Let me, while this is pulling up, just talk about some of the funding options for roads. I created a... Almost there at one point.
You're disconnected.
Let's try it again.
Marty could do it.
I know. Well, Marty's pretty good.
I was born in 76.
That's true. I was born in 71, so. Hey, look at that.
Wait, are we fully disclosing, Marty?
No. 71's just a little bit behind.
I could be Marty's mom.
Okay, so, I just wanted to start with this to show where we are currently at as far as road funding. In our fiscal year 18, so this is the upcoming year, if we don't do anything else as far as putting more money towards roads, we're estimating about $1 million in Class C revenue. The additional gas tax, which there was a change in the gas tax formula two years ago, we're estimating that's another $180,000 of revenue to us. And then, the general fund, the base budget, that's the 195 plus the 130,000 I just talked about, so that's the 325. So, we have the bond payment in fiscal year 18, which will be our last one, at 556,500, which means, now, this is cash available. If you saw Marty's presentation during our retreat on the rolling three-year plan, there's more money being spent than this because we're using some of the reserve funds and things like that, but this is just on a cash basis on any given year. So, 948,500. For the years on out, from fiscal year 19 to fiscal year 23, if we don't do anything different, we'll be resting right about 1.5 million a year dedicated for road funding. So, our potential, our goal is to reach 3.8 million, and so that's, when I get into the other scenarios here, that will reflect a pathway maybe that we can get to 3.8 million. So, with that, I want to talk about funding options. And this, these are not necessarily all-inclusive, these are just things for the city council to consider on ways that we could have additional monies earmarked for roads. So, one would be to do a property tax increase. If we wanted to generate an extra $1 million specifically for roads, then it would be $7.75 per month per $250,000 valuation of a home. On the commercial property, per $250,000 valuation, it'd be $14.09 per month. So, that's one way to do it. Some cities have done that. They have done a property tax increase, and they have specifically earmarked that for roads. And that's, some will use that, do part of it with property tax, others will use other things, but that's just one way to do it. Another way would be to do a budget reduction. In last year's budget, a line item by line item analysis was done that freed up 130,000 earmarked for roads, and we talked about that. If we wanted to generate another million dollars in savings in the general fund budget, that equates to roughly 10 full-time positions being eliminated, and this would also reduce operations by about $285,000 a year. So, that is possible, but there would be a reduction in service. Where the 10 full-time positions would come from, I don't know, that'd be a whole separate analysis that we would need to do, but that's what we would need to do to free up another million dollars in the, in the general fund. We also have legislative help. The state legislature passed HB 362 in 2015, which allows a county to put up a quarter cent sales cent sales tax increase to go to transportation. Utah County voters voted that, down that proposition. If it would have passed, Pleasant Grove would receive about an additional $374,000 in revenue. So I don't know if the county ever has plans to put that back on the ballot, um, but at this point, um, if that were ever to come back, that's roughly the additional money we've received. Any questions on those three before I start jumping into road fee? Okay. Last year, we asked Lewis Young, Robertson, and Burningham to do a road fee analysis on, uh, we call it the Provo model. Provo, uh, adopted a road fee a couple of years ago, uh, based on the use and trips for residential and, and commercial businesses. Um, and so we asked them to use that same model to see what the possibilities and what the fees would be for us. So this talks about our current funding mechanism, which is Class C road money and general fund. What they did is they took the residential units, single-family dwellings and multi-unit, multi-family units. Um, and they also took the commercial properties and, uh, divided them by trips. So less than two is the, what they call the adjusted, peak day adjusted trips. So there's a formula that goes into all this that accounts for that. So those, uh, businesses that have less than two trips, um, as far as addresses, we have 339 of those businesses. Those that generate two to four trips, we have 127. Those that generate four to 20, we have 36. And those that generate more than 20 trips, we have nine. And then they also, uh, established a public use, which was churches and schools, and there was 43, uh, addresses for that one. So this gave you a breakdown as to, uh, the percent of total trips and how it broke down, um, per the different businesses, the different types of housing, and for the public use. So you add all those up and that equals 100%. And then it allocates a revenue, and all this assumption was based on 1 million. We told them if we wanted to generate a million dollars in revenue, then, um, they, they back into these numbers. So what that means is it, it breaks it down to an annual fee per address and then a monthly fee. So under this, uh, scenario, the residential, single-family homes would be, pay 560 a month, the multi-unit, uh, housing would pay 350. And then businesses less than 20, less than two trips would pay $20.30 a month, and then you can see how it correlates. It gets pretty large. Those businesses that generate more than 20 trips, it's $492 a month for their road fee. And then for churches and schools, it's $177 per month. Okay? And this can give you some examples. Uh, so the single fam- family house and the apartments are pretty self-explanatory. A, a business that would be paying $20.30 a month, it would be like a general office. A small retail or maybe a medical dental office would be in the $60.20 per month range. Churches and schools would be the 177. Uh, fast food restaurants or large retail would be the $187 per month. And then the convenience store is the one that, um, generates the most traffic and they would be at $492 a month. So when we initially looked at those numbers, the city council wanted us to go back and take a look at things a little differently. One thing that they requested, um, was that the residential be combined, and so there's not a distinction between a single-family home and an apartment. And so that, that works out to, now $4.90 per residential unit. Uh, the distinction between multi-family and single-family doesn't matter. And then if we averaged all of the commercial into one number, it would be $60.20 per month. So that was one of the things the city council asked for. In the third scenario, we kept the red, oh, and the commercial public was, uh, taking the public and melding that into that, so the, there wasn't really a distinction for schools and churches other than they're generating trips and we're gonna, uh, put them in the realm with the commercial. Uh, so scenario three for the residential is the same, and this one we divided up, if it was zero to four trips for a commercial use, it was 43.50 a month. And then if it was, uh, four or more trips, it was $248.80 per month. So that, those were two things, uh, for the council to consider as far as if we were to generate, um, a million dollars in revenue off of a road fee, uh, this, these are the numbers that would, would play out in order to do that. The idea behind the road fee, like I said, is based on trips, it's based on use. It's not, uh, a property tax is not based on use, it's just based on a home valuation. And so there isn't a direct correlation between a property tax and, um, uh, in essence, and taking that money and putting it towards roads as much as a road fee, which would have a direct correlation between number of trips and, uh, the revenue generated. So any questions on the Lewis Young study?
Did you say that this followed a little bit with the Provo model?
Yeah, the Provo model, and they stuck with the, the one where it kept the commercial into four separate, they stuck with this one. I'm not sure about the, the single-family, uh, Denise, right next to me? Do you remember, did they have a, did they do apartments and single-family differently?
Um, I'm not positive, I have their information, I was gonna see if I could see it.
I, I'm assuming this is pretty close to what Provo decided to do. And they stuck with it. I mean, they, I'm sure, um, they had some concerns for, I mean, we have nine businesses that have over 20, and it's all the convenience stores in town. So those are, but that's a big number, 492, 40 a month. That is based on the traffic. Convenience stores generate more traffic than anything else that we do. So that's, that's what Provo stuck with. Any other questions on Lewis Young?
Lewis Young didn't do any kind of an analysis that excluded tax-exempt entities, right? We talked about that, um, raised that issue later, but we don't have numbers that, that try to offset or exclude that.
Yeah, this includes it. And what, what Provo did, um, is they, because, you know, 40% of their city's tax-exempt properties, they have BYU and they have, uh, you know, a large hospital there. So they actually negotiated with them. They waived their fee on this portion of it, and then they just negotiated a rate. So they exempted them, but they did turn around and get money from them. Other cities that haven't installed the road fee, most of them have not exempted church and schools. I think the reason Provo did it was because of BYU. I think that was the main reason. So, um, yeah, in my opinion, I think we would, um, we would stay with that as far as schools and churches are concerned.
So you're saying Provo did not exclude them?
They excluded them, but then they turned around and negotiated a different rate.
Their ordinance created a special exception for those entities, but the exception was only available if they agreed to pay, uh, a voluntary amount that was negotiated. So they are getting money from those entities, they're just not maybe the exact same as what they would have gotten under their road fee study.
How do we, how do we tie this kind of thought process to of us that actually use the roads? As opposed to a place where a person might go to, like a church or, or a business? How, how do you assign it to the, the person that's actually making use of the facility?
Yeah, so what, when they do the analysis, um, for instance, if I leave my home and I drive to a church, how does that count? Is the church paying double? Am I paying double at that point? Cause now the church is gonna have a bill. So the formula accounts for the idea that you have trips assigned to you as a household, but some of those trips are gonna be assigned to the businesses. And so it, in, in essence, um, it doesn't double count people. I think that's the intent of what they're trying to do. They're trying to keep it legitimate to my house coming and going, that's my trips. Businesses coming and going, that's their trips. So there's, I, I don't know enough about the formula to sit here and tell you.
It seems elaborate to put the formula to account for those kinds of things when the actual use is getting in a vehicle, driving, whether it's a truck, a bus, a car, a motor scooter. And the, the best way to assign cost to that is by the number of times or, or miles that a person uses the road. Only way I know of that is gasoline.
Yeah.
That's, that's basically, unless it's electric, which we don't have a method of, of, uh, seeing.
Yeah.
But it seems like gasoline, I mean, if I choose to drive 100,000 miles this year, then that's on me. And if my neighbor never leaves the home, uh, why should they pay for my use?
Yeah, and I, I would just say this, I don't think there's a perfect formula that just accounts for everything.
But that's the most perfect.
I, I think, well, this, I mean, this is...
This is the second most.
The most perfect is a toll booth on the road, cause that gets electric cars on every road, you'd have to have a toll booth on every road.
There's one up going to American Fort Canyon and everybody just says they're going to Mutual Dell and they, they don't pay it.
Sneak past it, unenforced, unenforced toll road. Yeah, that's right.
Another, another really good one would be a driver's license and you just account for so many, I mean, there, there's a lot of measurements that I think haven't been used in our neck of the woods, so.
Scott, tell us why these types, tell us why these types of studies are done and cities do them.
Well, the, the reason if we're doing a road fee, we want to have a study backing this up is that if we get challenged, if somebody says this is not user-based, we can show the data to say, well, it is, we've done the formulas. Um, there's been cities that have, it's been arbitrary numbers, but they've just put on their utility bill and, you know, nobody's challenged them on it. We were hoping Provo would get challenged to kind of clear up any, anything that would happen, but Provo hasn't been challenged on theirs. And so, um, as far as, um, you know, the, what the courts have to say about a road fee, we don't know, it hasn't been addressed.
There's some, um, some fun cities that are, uh, actually combining some different types of trip generation and also classifying as to, uh, like, kind of a morphing of the property tax where you take, your trip is actually based, um, not so much on just a unit, but they've, they've gone deeper as to clarifying the unit. And if there's a frontage or, um, a, uh, square footage equation that also went into that as well.
Yeah. It can get pretty complex, I mean, even this is pretty complex, I think, uh, when you get into the, the math of it and how the, it's all by engineering standards and they, um, you know, they calculate it by business use and what, you know, kind of nationwide convenience store, how many trips in and out that they, they have. So it, in my opinion, this is defensible because it is based on formula, it's not an arbitrary thing where we say, okay, we're just gonna charge residents X amount of dollars and businesses X amount of dollars. It's, there's a, there's a rationale behind it. But I guess to your point, or Mayor, is there's just, there's not a perfect formula. But this, this is pretty good as far as things are concerned. Ready for the next one? Okay, so, uh, when we did this last year, I just started creating scenarios to figure out a way we could get to 3.8 million. And so I have, and I did like six of them, and then I think Ben requested one last year, and then I've had a couple of requests for a couple of different ones. Um, so I'll just kind of walk through these a little bit, and if you have any questions, you can let me know. So scenario number two is if we took $50,000 of general fund money every year when we did our budget in earmark for roads, that would be our new money. And then $500,000 of new road fee money. Uh, so that would, that would show you that, um, and I'll use fiscal year 19 as the example because the bond payment's gone by then. Uh, we, it would be about 2.1 million in funding, um, that we would have available towards roads. When we get to fiscal year 23, that goes up to 2, almost 2.6 million. And then on the bottom there, down here, this shows what the residential would be paying. So the numbers that Lewis Young gave us, I just cut them in half. So the residential instead of 490s, 245. And then on the commercial, um, I, we went with the scenario in which all the businesses were just put into one fee, so that's what is reflected here. And I just cut that in half, so that'd be $30.10 a month per business. Now, this is, this is me doing this, this is nothing that the council said, hey, we love this, but this is a 10% annual increase on the road fee each year, again, to try to grow this number to eventually 3.8 million. Now, we, we might hit 3.8 by the time our 20 years is up, but that's, there's, so there's no guarantees each year. This number's not guaranteed each year, that's a decision the city council has to make each year. This number's not guaranteed, the 10% annual increase. And these numbers aren't guaranteed. I mean, at any time, the council can, uh, reduce those if they choose. So just everybody keep in mind, this is a roadmap, this is not a mandate, this is not policy that our city council said this is absolutely how we're doing it, so.
Did you want to repeat that again?
Yes, this is not a mandate.
And that, that was the disclaimer?
That's a disclaimer.
This is you playing with a graph.
This is me getting all excited about a spreadsheet.
So Scott, you think that we should implement?
This is the small one, so. All right, so the next one was scenario three, where we would take $100,000 of general fund new money and $500,000 of new road fee money, and again, have the 10% annual increase, but instead of 50,000 in general fund, we'd put 100,000. Now, when I did this last year, it must've been after the budget was over because that number concerns me now, as we're into budget right now, to clear $100,000 of new money, uh, general fund and earmark it towards roads with, um, the other needs that we have of the city. So anyway, that gets us to 2 point, almost 2.9 million, um, at the end of fiscal year 23. So this one is if we do 50,000 in general fund money and a million dollars in new road fee. So you can see the rates here, this is what's consistent with the Lewis Young study. And at this one, I put a 5% escalator in there, just to, again, to try to show what happens as the money grows. Uh, so that one's just, uh, a little bit over 3 million, um, at the end of fiscal year 23. Scenario five is, um, $100,000 in general fund new money and, uh, a million dollars in the new road fee, again with the 5% escalator. This is the one that probably gets us the closest, um, pretty close to 3.4 million after fiscal year 23. Scenario six, um, and this was a little bit of a hybrid, and I think this was something that was requested as we were looking at it. That was to keep the residential at 490, but cut the business in half. And so the, uh, a big concern that we had last year, and I'm sure is still a concern this year, is the impact on businesses with the road fee. So that was one of the requests, is that maybe we cut the businesses in half, we leave the residential whole. So that generates $800,000 in new road fee money, and this shows you how that plays out. Again, I put a 5%, 5% escalator in there.
Does that...
Not necessarily. I mean, it, we're starting to step a little bit outside of the study. And so if that, um, puts us in a precarious situation, it could. Uh, scenario seven, I think, is, uh, something that Ben requested, and that was, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ben, if you were the one that, uh, requested this, but, uh, this was $100,000 of general fund new money and then $250,000 of a new road fee. And then the general fund money would increase 5% every year as well as the road fee, um, to show, um, that the city would be, uh, on a regular basis, putting even more money out of the general fund of the new money in. This shows the corresponding rates. So in essence, a $250,000 road fee would cut, uh, the, uh, million dollar scenario in, in force. So it'll be a dollar 23 per month for residents and $15.05 for businesses. That gets us to about 2.5 million at the end of fiscal year 23. Uh, this is one that I was asked to take a look at, um, just recently. Uh, reducing the general fund new money down to 25,000 a year, so that's reflected here. The road, the road fee would be 967,000, that would be keeping the residential at 490, so keeping the residential whole. so keeping the residential whole. And then the road fee would kind of go back, and instead of four different trip amounts, we would combine it into three. So less than two trips would be $20.30, two to four trips would be 60.20 per month. And then the businesses with four or more trips would be $187 per month. The reason that generates a little less than a million dollars is because those that are, that would, the nine businesses that would be generating the $492 per month would be dropped back to 187. And so the, the difference is about $33,000 of revenue generated. So that's a, that's a, just another scenario to consider. And then this is one that I was asked to run some numbers on. Again, $25,000 general fund money, and then on the residential, to double the residential, and then on the business, leave the business the same. And so that one generates 1.6 million dollars of new road fee money. And then this one is the one that gets us the closest, in fiscal year 23, we're at almost 3.7 million. So those are the nine scenarios. If the city council wants me to do some other ones, you can tell me what you, what you want me to do, and I'll put a new scenario up, and we can crunch those numbers. Other than that, that's as far as presentation on my end, that's all we have. And most of this is just kind of a review of what we had from last year, so this really just focuses on the funding side of it and where the money could come from.
Any questions for Scott?
I'm going to ask him to do a scenario 10, just because we, we need a third page, right?
I knew it.
I need a-
An even number.
Even number, yeah. And I'll make it easy on you, I think it's just a mixture of eight and nine. You just take the trips that you have on number eight for the businesses, and you add that to, to number nine. Instead of the 60 on number nine, you, you have those three broke out. 20, 30, 60, 20, and 187, 80.
If you want to take the trips here.
Move them down, move them down to number nine and make a number 10, just out of curiosity.
Revenue-wise, all, all that does is it drops to 33,000. $1,000 a year. So that's, that's the, it would impact the 5% annual increase, it would impact that a little bit.
So you'd be down to like 1.5?
So over the course of one, two, three, four, five, six years, it'd probably be $180,000 less. But I'll run a spreadsheet on that and, just so it shows that.
Maybe this is a question for Denise or Scott. How soon, if the council voted on a road fee, would it be implemented and could we start collecting funds?
The road fee, you can implement at any time. It's not, does not have to be tied into the fiscal year budget.
So, so technically, we could start collecting funds next month, I mean, I'm not saying that's going to happen, but hypothetically, that could happen.
Yeah.
It, there's no, like, not a waiting period, there's not, it's just funds start rolling in once it's initiated.
It would be attached to the utility bill, is my understanding, so it'd probably be a, a billing cycle, you know, like a whole billing cycle after it was approved.
Yeah, it might be delayed a month, I guess is what we're saying.
Because of billing.
But it would be an immediate, basically an immediate.
Yeah, yeah.
So, and I, I, I can't remember if we talked about this, but if we collect money on a utility bill, does that turn it into an enterprise fund? And can enterprise funds not receive general fund money?
So Denise, correct me if I'm wrong, but when I did research on this while we were looking at it before. When I did research on it, when we were looking at it before, it does not turn it into an enterprise fund? But our plan was to create what they call a special revenue fund, which is similar, but it doesn't have the same restrictions. And also what was discussed before is that in the ordinance adopting the road fee, we would include language that said that the money was only to go to the roads and, and we would have to create that special revenue fund, and the money would be put in there as it was collected. So it doesn't turn it into an enterprise fund, but we can kind of create our own fund that's similar to that without all the restrictions that the state has.
And under that scenario, if we wanted to move money out of the road fund for any use, would require a public hearing and notice, notice on the utility bill. Which is similar to how the enterprise funds are.
And is that restricted to maintenance, or is that, can be used for new build or reconstruct? I mean, are there, are there restrictions on what type of? I mean, we can earmark it for roads, but I'm, you know, like, lots of different ways to-
So, because there's different revenue sources, the, the general fund money could be used for about anything. The, the road fee is what we designated to be.
Okay.
And so we, we say this is only going to go for maintenance, no new roads, it's not going to go for curb, gutter, sidewalk, or if you want it to go for curb, gutter, sidewalk, that could be part of, part of it too.
Okay.
The class C monies are, they're restricted.
Right.
But they're, I mean, I think they can be used for, I know they can be used to pay employees and stuff. We, we don't do that, because we put it towards roads.
You can pay for your street department with class C monies, we don't, but you can.
So the restrictions are up to us.
Okay. What was that called again, a special?
Special revenue.
Special-
Revenue fund is what I remember it being called in the statute.
Yeah, that's right.
Other questions? Did you have some information you wanted to share? Okay. Yeah, we can open it up for our discussion. And we can ask Marty or Scott any questions anytime. Okay, council, so we have 3.8 million in need. It, it looks like we're generating with the gas tax. Scott, you're going to have to help me with the number here, about 1.4?
This is where we're at today. So fiscal year 18, if we do nothing, 948,500, once that bond payment falls off, we'll be at about 1.5 million a year.
Five.
And by the way, I'd like to mention that when we started, that was at 220, 220,000?
Well, that was, I mean, it was because the bond at the time, we, we just didn't have much money available. And there was, in a few years, they would save money to do a project, so there were some years we spent very minimal, and then we would spend 500,000 or something, but.
Yes, but I, can I just do a little dance of joy for just a second?
Yeah, that's a huge number.
All right, thank you.
Relatively speaking.
But Scott, we, we've also decided as a council, and you mentioned this, to allocate general fund money towards the roads, which wasn't being done before.
No, no, that's all happened in the last four years.
So the, under this scenario, or under this, the current scenario, we're about 2.3 million shy annually.
Yep.
From properly maintaining the roads on the 20-year plan, getting us, getting us to where we need to be. And, and when you look at that from, from everything else that, that is done in the city, is there another area that we fall that short in, in maintaining or funding appropriately?
Yeah, I, I mean, that's a good question, I, I don't necessarily think so. I think sometimes facilities, it's pretty typical for cities to get behind on facility maintenance.
That's probably true.
But other than that, I mean, if you look at our, just our general fund, the public safety and parks and community development and those types of things, I think we're funded at a, at a level which, in which we can be competent in what we're doing. Roads, yeah, is, I mean, that's, there's nothing that has a 2.3 million deficit.
Mayor, I need to clarify one thing that you asked me earlier, whether or not there was inflation adjusted into those numbers. And one thing we have to understand is that, that was based on a shot in time of 108 miles of road, and we're going to continue to grow here, and those new roads are also going to take funding. So just, just understand that just because we say 3.8 million dollars today, if we get another mile of new roads in the next three or four years, then there's going to be additional costs to maintain those roads as well. We estimated that to be about, you know, $21,000 a mile type of thing per year. So, so there's some adjustments that are going to have to be made, but I just wanted to clarify that the 3.8 was-
So this is your disclaimer?
This is my disclaimer that, that it's not 3.8 and we never need any more, because we're going to get more roads, and we're going to have to maintain those roads as well. But as, as a shot in time, this is how many miles of roads we have, that's what was estimated, so.
Thank you, Marty, thanks for pointing that out. It, it seems like when, whenever we started doing roads and everything else associated with the city, most of the areas have, have had an adjustment over time to kind of keep up with where they need to be in order to provide that service and provide it adequately. Buildings would be a good example of a, an exception to that. I, I think this last year, we, we saw just by having an engineering study looking at our facilities, that that was, we just fell short. Facilities themselves have not been invested in from a maintenance standpoint. But roads, if it was the Tribune or the, or the Deseret News, one of them ran an article about how in our state, statewide, cities and counties have just relied upon the gas tax for the maintenance money to take care of the roads. New build, either, either a city would do it occasionally, or a developer, and they put in something.
Or, or impact fees would, could put, yeah.
Right, they would, they would build the new facility.
Yep.
But when they turn it over to the city, it doesn't come with maintenance.
No.
It comes as a facility, and then, and then it requires maintenance over time. Impact fees, interesting. We don't collect enough to take care of maintenance on roads.
But we can't even-
Is that even allowed?
No, it's not allowed.
Not even allowed?
It's only for new roads.
So, I mean, except for what's taken place in the last few years here, the only monies that have gone towards roads have been the class C road funds that have come through the state through the gasoline tax.
Yeah, until 2013. And then we start putting general fund money.
Right, general fund money. This, this seems like an area where you need to turn to the people, talk to them, get their input on this specific subject, and address the issue to raise the 3.8 million. We're only going to fall farther behind. Looking at, looking at year 23, you're still generating 1.5, or even if you go down the scenarios, none of them came to 3.8, none of them came to 3.4. That means every year that we are short on that 3.4, something million roads are not getting, 2. something million dollars in roads are not getting maintained.
Yeah, eventually you pay the piper.
You're paying it, and you're paying more, because when you don't maintain something, it falls apart and then it has to be completely redone. So, I don't see a silver bullet on this. You don't ease into it. This is, this is a painful reality that we either get rid of roads or we, we step up and, and it's time to pay for it. So we have to figure that out. It's also a very sensitive subject, I think our citizens want the roads issues, roads issue to be dealt with. I bet there's a lot of people that wouldn't be too happy about what it's going to cost to get it taken care of. And no matter where, no matter where we try to assign the 3.8 million, it's 3.8 million. And it, it's going to come from somewhere. You're either paying it in the form of a profit through the business that they then turn around and remit in the form of a fee, or a property tax, or a road fee. You know, it, it all comes down to the people are paying for this. And with such a large amount associated with it, I think it deserves, you know, having a couple of public hearings where we get input from the public and we outline this, and we get their feedback. And, and maybe there will be some ideas in there on a different way that we can tackle this and still hit the, the goal. What are your thoughts on that, council?
We had the, the public hearing last year. I'd like to have, as you're suggesting, a couple more, like ASAP, because people want the issue dealt with immediately. And I would like us as a council, if we so choose, to vote on a scenario, present that scenario to the public and then get the feedback on that, and adjust the scenario based off, you know, what we hear. But I'm thinking like in the next month or so, we get it on the agenda, we start the public hearing, we decide on the scenario, if it's the road fee to be implemented, and we go from there. Because I think we've been, we had the public hearing last year, I thought we got positive feedback as towards leaning towards a road fee. I think we need to start moving as quickly as possible, if this is the direction that we want to head, to get feedback from the public and, and then nail down what we exactly want to do.
Other, other comments?
I just say, I do like the idea of the council deciding on one scenario, so that we're not, we don't have 10 scenarios up there and the public is all over the place to just, here's one, here's one way to do it, and then get some feedback, and then the council can adjust accordingly, I think that's a good idea.
Or three, or maybe, you know, maybe there's a trifecta of property tax, you know, road fee. I, I do want to, I, I have been kind of playing around, I do have a question, that's what I should say. There are certain roads in town that are going to cost an exorbitant amount of money. So for example, 1100 North. We have been saving and, you know, like, it would take us four years of saving everything to do just that road, and no, no other projects would be done. And so I wonder if there is a way to do a small bond that is specifically allocated for one certain project, and maybe there's a revenue stream to pay that off with a, a small property tax. So, you know, I wonder if there are different ways to think about the very large, that, so do you see what I'm saying? So like 1100 would be a million and a half, $2 million. So, I know.
I agree, I mean, that's, and I agree with Diana, if there's a way to do some of these huge projects, I mean, and when it comes to minus 1100 as well, I just, I can't see them waiting like five or six more years, but at the rate we're going, that's what's going to have to happen, unless we only focus on that road. So is there a way to do a small, a minimal bond amount for that road to get that project done? The property tax, I'm not in favor of, I, I like the road fee based on trips traveled, I think it makes sense, it's easier to explain to the public, and I don't-
And I agree with the property tax thing, that I don't like it, it's not a good measurement, but I don't want to pay for the bond out of road fee money.
And maybe that's something, I don't know, Denise, you can address that right now, if that's something you have to go back and review of how if we did do a small bond to pay for a major road like 1100, how we could do that, where that would come from, if that's, I don't know.
Yeah, we could crunch the numbers, and it, you know, if we did a 10-year bond, or I don't know, five-year.
Five-year probably for that amount, yeah.
Then we can just run numbers and say, this is what the annual cost will be. And then you can compare that to what the revenue is.
I just, especially with 1100, I mean, there's multiple churches and school, and it's such a major road that, I don't know, it's, it's probably one of the most, the roads that, not just from people coming and saying, you know, fix my road on 1100, but it is a major connector for a lot of those facilities. And it's just falling into, you know, worst repair, as, as like everywhere in the city is. But I would like to look, explore the option, and not just for 1100, but are there other options that we're not looking at that maybe could include a short-term bond that's not going to affect us like the one that we did several years ago, to that extent? So I don't know if that's something you can get in, in the numbers.
To me, I think the difference would be, as to the, the bond we did 10 years ago, is that that was taking up 75% of our money.
Right.
And if we had the road fee in place and we did a bond, it wouldn't, it'd be taking, let's say, 30% of our money. So there's still a substantial amount of money to still do other road projects.
Okay.
It wouldn't just chew it all up like the other one did, so.
But just how do we do those very large? Not that I, not that I'm depressed at all right now, but, you know, when you look at those $2 million, and I know 1100 probably re, it probably hits all the criteria for, you know, moving people and, and needing, I'm looking at Marty like he's going to tell me, yes, it- and needing, I'm looking at Marty like he's gonna tell me, yes, it hits all the criteria.
It definitely does. I mean, the problem with 1100 North is first funding, making sure we've got enough there, but then we've got all the utility coordination on that road as well. We need a new storm drain line. JUB did, in 2007.
How many years ago?
Dan?
10 years ago, you put that up as an SID. Failed. So, we've already had one shot at 1100 North.
SID to repair the road or just put the-
To put the road and rebuild it.
Oh, really?
Yeah, it was, I was there. Just got them today. Yeah, they're all done and so, but, I mean, it's much different now because we had the SID that went through and did all the south side of the road from Fifth South to Third, I mean, Fifth East to Third East. But, you know, the whole concept of that project, the thing is that we gotta remember here as well, when you're talking about large projects that we're now trying to incorporate our utility planning and things of that nature. And I think the important part is, is if there is more funding available, then we can start to tackle this bigger question of the larger projects. And right now, with such little funding available, we're not able to even really without allocating, like Diana's saying, allocating all the funding to that project for the next five years so we can pay back that bond. It's not possible. Right now, it's not, you know, that's the whole reason why 1100 North wasn't in the consideration. I've gotta deal with other utility lines as well as the road. And so, that discussion has to be a bigger discussion, not only just for the road funding, but now I've gotta look at my other utility fundings and make sure we get the infrastructure under it done before we do the project, so. And, you know, that's another thing that at some point to consider, I mean, right now, understand the funding we're talking about is only doing the pavement section and there's all of these discussions about curb gutter and sidewalk in different projects. 900 South was one of them, you guys have, we had that public meeting this last week. And so, the question is, is do some of these, you know, do we wanna look at SIDs as an option to do the curb gutter and sidewalk? Well, that increases our costs, but I think there might be a few select projects that we should still consider. Well, I think it's called special assessment areas now, but we could do some of those things to make those projects a little bit better, but.
Explain that to me. What is a SID?
Yeah, it used to be called a special improvement district. If this legislature changed the name to special assessment area.
Okay.
So, what it is, is a neighborhood will have a need, they'll need to install sewer like 180 West did several years ago, or they'll need to have curb gutter and sidewalk. It's an older area of the town and they don't have curb gutter and sidewalk. It's a process that we can go through. They have to have a certain percentage of signatures of people who are willing to pay for the improvements. They have to pay for them. We pay for them upfront. We do the project, we pay for them upfront. They're assessed a fee based on the, usually the front foot fee of whatever the percentage of their property is, and they pay us back over a period of 10 years.
And that's only for curb gutter and sidewalk portion though, so the widening of the asphalt is all done by the city.
Yeah.
It's just for curb gutter and sidewalk costs that the assessment area can do.
So, there's several major subcategories of this whole topic that need to be fleshed out.
Yep.
And rather than get into the bowels of one project-
Yeah.
-or the mechanics of how a larger project gets funded and scheduled versus multiple smaller projects, I think there needs to be some work done to gauge where the public is at with tackling the problem and what the best way to tackle this problem is. Do they wanna, do they wanna pay for this out of property taxes? Do they wanna have a road fee? Do they want an assessment on a per-trip basis? What is the, rather than launch out there, this is what we're gonna do and here's what it's gonna be, you know, cost-wise, I think that maybe our recent experience tells us that it's probably better to engage with people earlier so they have an opportunity to think about these things and wrap their heads around the issues at hand and wrestle with them. I would be concerned if we went out and said, okay, here's the solution and this is what it's gonna be and we've voted on it and there it is. I don't think we're ready and we should have learned from that experience in our recent past.
I don't think anyone's suggesting that.
No. I'm suggesting that we pace ourselves and take a deeper look at how to engage the public in solving this problem.
So, I have two thoughts on that. One of them is, we, we own the streets.
The people of Pleasant Grove.
Yeah, we. They are ours. And so, what happens is, is that when you explain the situation, then it really is a decision that they make, okay, so do I want this, the streets funded or I don't? And it does, it gives us an idea of what they are willing to spend. Another thing is, I think it would be interesting, we have a group of people, the neighborhood chairs. It would be interesting, they've proven for a long time that they're very willing to come every other week. I would be very interested especially to have a conversation with them and ask them to go out into their neighborhoods and explain the situation and then maybe bring back even, you know, what is it, what do you want to pay for your roads? If the residents come back and say, no, we don't want our roads funded, we don't wanna spend money, well, then we don't have, we can quit worrying about it. So, I mean, if we're not willing to pay for them, then we don't want them, right?
I think that's pretty logical, yeah. Other, yeah, Ken?
Mayor, we did just complete a survey which did not include a question about, specifically about what are you willing to pay for roads, although there were questions that alluded to, what do you think the biggest issues are? And course, roads came to the top. But we could do another survey specific to the road question in regards to what people would like to pay. We could, you know, publicize that, put it on the website.
I mean, I think we should definitely do that in addition to a public hearing.
Yeah.
But I think we've been talking about these scenarios for months. I think we choose a scenario as a council, if it's one or two, let's move forward with a public hearing, let's send out a link to those who can't attend the public hearing and let's get rolling on feedback so we can know how to proceed instead of, I feel like we're just kinda going in circles to a certain extent. We're getting the road work done with our current budget, but if residents are willing to pay, let's start fixing the roads, let's hear from them and let's start moving forward on fixing the roads. So, that would, that's my suggestion moving forward and I'm thinking sooner than later, like in the next month, we have our first public hearing, send the notice out, get the online link going, and let's start getting feedback so we can nail down if it's a road fee that we decide and start going.
Can you turn that light on for us? Thank you.
Can I just add something? When we were proposing this last year, we sent out a letter to every resident in our community inviting them to a public hearing. And the scenario that they were presented with was for the $1 million. So, $4.90 per household and $60.20 per business per month. And so, that's when we condensed all the businesses into one number. So, that's, that is what our public has seen last year. So, I don't, as far as the other scenarios, I don't know if we've ever presented anything else to them other than that letter, so. So, they've already seen the $1 million road fee as far as our notification, but obviously-
And that scenario four, is that correct?
Well, it's, what we sent to the public did not consider any general fund, additional general fund money from the city. It was just, we're looking at a road fee and we're looking at generating $1 million and here's how much it would be. So, it didn't really contemplate any other funding besides the gas tax, the general fund money and the road fee. So, anyway, the public's already been exposed to that, I guess, is what I'm saying. I do like the idea though of, if we do a public hearing, let's do that, let's combine it with an online survey and/or, I don't know if we wanna go as far as maybe do it in an open house where it's a little less formal or if you wanted-
I personally like the feedback-
The public hearing?
Yeah, the public hearing, because I don't feel like we can hear as council members, I don't, that's me. I like to be able to hear from each person, be able to, you know, answer questions if they have any. But I'd also like to include on the mailer to residents that there would be, that we're considering the 5% increase so they know that this is not a flat rate for-
A one-time deal.
Yeah, one-time, that there would be a gradual increase if that's what's decided by the council.
Right. So, there's a little bit of decision-making to be done from the council as to which scenario that, you know, would be presented. Right now, it's the $1 million which doesn't hit the 3.8 million dollar mark. So, I think that we need to kinda discuss that a little bit as a council and figure out, are we gonna hit 3.8 or are we going to hit something shorter than that?
Well-
I'll give you a bunch of thoughts if you'd like on a lot of different issues. If we could pull the scenarios back up too, that would be helpful.
Okay.
I have been advocating for a long time that we go all the way, that we get 3.8. I think if we are charging a fee and we are still seeing our roads deteriorate, we're getting more and more failing roads because we're only generating two or two and a half, we're gonna have a lot of angry people for good reason.
And rightfully so.
So, I think we wanna get 3.8. The beauty of scenario seven, lucky number seven, which is not the best scenario possible, but it's the best of the ones on this board, is that it attempts to achieve greater parity between the city and the citizens and builds in an escalator on both halves of the equation. I've long advocated for a hybrid solution, a solution that involves compromise and shared sacrifice on all sides. And so, that scenario is attractive to the extent that it expects the city to make some hard decisions and to continue to figure out ways to get more money, just like we're asking the citizens to make some hard decisions. As we go up beyond scenario seven, we see the hard decisions asked of the citizens getting larger and larger and those being willing to be made by the city getting smaller and smaller. So, by the time you get to scenario nine, you're looking at a quarter of that much money generated from the city and an awful lot more money generated from the public, which I don't think goes over well and I don't think it shows a spirit of shared sacrifice. So, we have long said in this room, and I've heard everywhere I've ever listened to it, that bonding is a mistake for roads, that you don't bond for something that's maintenance, you don't bond for that kind of expense. I think that we do need to look very closely at this kind of a utility tax and the budget reduction piece of the equation, but I think there's kind of, and maybe I'll expand your list here of funding options, Scott, because I think there's some initial reactions people make when they see the world from one or two, one of two different perspectives. They think, you know, either you raise money through the citizenry or you cut services somehow, and I don't think it's quite that simple or that black and white. There's actually a lot of other options. There are ways to raise money without taxes that involve increased user fees to get less of our services subsidized, figure out a way to make Fox Hollow make money sooner, faster, make things like rec centers available and accessible without being so heavily subsidized. So, there are ways to generate, there are ways to ask for more money from people that are tied specifically to uses and that's a lot more attractive to people than big tax increases. And there are ways to cut costs that don't involve cutting services. There are ways to achieve efficiencies and sometimes that's outsourcing, but at least people still have jobs, they just work for a different entity than the city. There are ways to do shuffling around that doesn't actually impact our services at all but saves us tremendous money that can go straight towards our roads. And so, if we're going to talk about all the different scenarios, I think we ought to talk about all the scenarios and talk about specifically, you know, if we were to generate $1 million in savings, how would we do that out of our city budgets? What would that look like? What would the proposal look like that would save us $1 million out of our city budgets? Have our department heads and our city administrator and our finance director put some heads together and say, what would our proposal be? Maybe we would get a lot more creative about ways to get out of Fox Hollow if we were really forced to come up with a million bucks. And so, the better approach is to fully vet all of our options and figure out, is there a way to get some savings more available to put towards roads? Because as I've long said, if it's our highest priority, it ought to be the very first thing we fund. And then we could ask for more money for something else. If we look at, you know, if we funded roads first, what would that look like? We've never even put together that scenario of what does it look like if Pleasant Grove City fully funds roads, the highest priority of the citizenry, fully funds it first. If that were done, what would that look like? What would the impact be? And maybe there would be some significant changes in the way we operate in various departments across the city, but we have never articulated that, that scenario. I think it's research that merits being done to say, this is what that would look like, this is what it involves. And so, we're gonna ask the citizenry to step up and make sure that we don't have to lose employees or whatever the needs would be that would be possibilities, but I think we would get really creative, right? I mean, when you start looking at making hard decisions, we're gonna ask our citizens to make some hard decisions. If we do a hybrid approach, they're gonna get creative because a lot of them are on fixed incomes, a lot of them are really tightly, tightly spread and thinly spread and have some very difficult decisions to make. And they'll get creative and they'll keep some things in their home five years longer than they meant to. And I think a lot of the public, at least the ones that are calling me daily, are saying, are there ways we can get another couple of years out of our computers and a couple more years out of our vehicles and a couple more years out of things that we use in the city to find some savings without impacting people who we care about and love, people who work for the city, but that will get us a little more money out of the city's resources to show a shared sacrifice, to show an approach that is responsible and disciplined and that will build some confidence as we ask the public to also participate. So, it's discouraging to see the numbers getting smaller and smaller for what we're willing to do and larger and larger for what we're asking the public to do as we go through higher scenario numbers. But I think what we need to do is go back to fully vetting this budget reduction option and figure out what does that scenario truly look like? And I think we've gotta be able to say, we have done our due diligence, public, on all of our different options. We've come up with a hybrid approach that involves shared sacrifice, where we're willing to do our part too as a city and we're hoping you'll step up and do yours because universally, thousands of people across the city tell me they're willing to do their part. I think if we put it in the hands of the public, I have also said we should allow the public to vote on this in a ballot measure because I think it would be overwhelmingly supported if they felt like we up here as elected officials were doing our part as well.
So, that's great. At a theoretical level, what I'm looking for is which scenario fully funds roads, 3.8 million. Is there one?
I think we need something like scenario seven but escalated more on both sides of the equation.
So, do we have a 3.8 million dollar-
You're at 3.697 with number nine.
Number nine's the closest.
If we kinda focus in at the top first, we need 3.8 million and nothing short of 3.8 million is what my understanding was when this scenario was, when this whole problem was presented and studied by JUB. Is that accurate? Okay. So, if we're starting with scenarios that don't meet the need, I think we're asking for problems right from the beginning and we need to be looking at 3.8 million. Now, after you've started with 3.8 million, then you can take a look at the split between what can you repurpose from resources that you currently are collecting versus what new resources do you need in order to make up this 3.8 million? And this is where I think at a high level, right, it's not rhetoric, it's how much here and how much here. You add the two together, you get 3.8. Then you can get into the scenarios about, okay, what is that work on per residence, per commercial entity, from a fee perspective, a tax, but unless we're starting at 3.8, I just don't think we're gonna, we're gonna hit the, we're gonna solve the problem, we're not gonna solve the problem unless we have a goal to hit the 3.8.
I agree.
So-
Let's do a scenario 10 that looks like, looks at scenario seven and multiplies both- Let's do a scenario 10 that looks like, looks at scenario seven and multiplies both sides by whatever the factor needs to be to get to 3.8.
So can I just say something, and I'm gonna stay calm? First of all, I wanna address the Fox Hollow conversation. Can I please?
Yeah, yeah, we can. Let me, let me prelude this discussion just a little bit.
So I have time to breathe for just a second?
Yes, and think about what you might say, and the ramifications of what you might say. We could spend our time tonight discussing one person's feeling about a particular service versus another person's feeling about a particular service. My experience tells me both are right and both are wrong. And it's narrow-minded to think that one individual has all of the answers, and they're correct. But we have 36,000 people in our city, and the majority of them that take the time to get involved and actually vote on something, they actually do speak for everyone. And so if we take the time to present the overall problem, and as far as we can get it with, with the analysis that's appropriate, and we get the heads together and they give us feedback on those ideas, and it is genuine that we've looked at things, I think we're gonna end up where we need to be as far as everybody heading in the same direction on focusing on the problem, as opposed to picking apart daycare, or picking apart number of bullets, or hoses, or shovels, or books. You know, I, I, I think that we're, we're still way up here. I don't see a 3.8 million dollar scenario on the board, and there's 10 of them now, after discussing this for several months. We need a 3.8 million dollar solution.
And you want the 3.8 to reflect right away, not over seven years?
Well, I think if it started in 2019, fiscal year 2019, that's the first time that the full bond is gone.
Yeah.
And I, and I think that's when you have the picture between the settling of Class C road funds, gas tax impact, HB 362, yada, yada, yada. There's a, there's a bunch of things that have been in flux. We even, we even thought going into this legislative session that there might be some adjustments, and now we see where we are. So I think we have the answers, you know, the, the formula, the, the resources are in front of us, there aren't any new ones. So we need a 3.8 million dollar solution.
So we can give you a number, the, the thing that, as staff, that's gonna be difficult for us, is we talk about a budget reduction, if it's, let's say, a million dollars in order to get to the 3.8. We now need your feedback as to what services that you want reduced.
So let me make sure I'm following you. For every 10 full-time positions that are eliminated, do I understand that that is a million dollars in savings?
And 285,000 dollars in operations.
And plus 285?
Correct.
Okay. And the percentage of the total budget that's payroll versus...
71%.
71.45 is payroll in the general fund.
Okay. Does this, does the 715,000 versus the 285, does that ratio match the percentage of payroll to... Okay, so that's what we're looking at.
Yeah.
Okay, it's really close. It's 70/30, basically.
Yeah, it's pretty close.
Is that right?
Yep.
71/29?
71, 71/45 to 28/55.
Okay.
Makes a difference.
I, I, I understand. Forgive me, I'm, I'm trying to just understand it at a higher, high level here. 70/30 is about where my head hits, and I think that we should probably put the 3.8 million scenario on the table, throw the million dollars in there that's gonna come from the, the general fund, and, and at this point, that's, you know, that's everything, right? It's all in. And what does that look like in terms of people, in terms of spend? And where else, where else can we come up with that kind of...
Yeah, so I guess what I'm saying is, we can tell you how many people, but what, what we won't be able to tell you is what departments they're each gonna come out of. And so if we want the high-level look, we, we can get there.
I think it is a high-level look, and for the reason I just stated. If we get into the discussion on whether it's Fox Hollow, or Shannon Fields, or, or the library, or anything else, just start naming them, we're going down a rat hole that will, that will inflame different parts of the community. And we still don't have buy-in that they wanna pay 3.8 million to fix the road. Clue, all of the money is the citizens. There is no our money and the citizens' money, it is all the citizens' money. It doesn't matter where it is, all of it belongs to the citizens. So the concept of shared pain, we're sharing it amongst each other. It's not the city, organization, and the citizens, it's all the citizens' money. All of us here that volunteer, or that are elected, and everybody that works, work for the people of Pleasant Grove. So it's their city, their money. Now, do we wanna talk about Fox Hollow?
I would like to represent a group of people that are not calling Ben, they're calling me. And they have begged that, first of all, we don't insult them by asking for $5 a month. And they voted for the rec center and the pool, and they, and they don't want those cut. So Ben can stand on his, "I advocate for everyone," they, he doesn't for the people that are calling me. And when he says that, they get very, very angry. And so I want to be their voice. They're not here tonight, they're at home having great lives, but don't, don't cut their services. That's why they moved here. And you know what else? They love Pleasant Grove. I had a, 25 people in a meeting, and they all went around the room and they talked about how much they loved Pleasant Grove. And all I get from people is how much they, on Facebook, how much they dislike it. But there is a group of people out there that just love this town and love living here, and don't cut their services.
There's more than one group.
Yeah, there's hundreds of groups that love this city.
Other input?
I'll give my input. I did, you know, I keep hearing, we had this discussion last year, right? Quite a, quite a bit, and a little bit of heated, but we also had a lot of good feedback from residents that came in and expressed, if we're gonna do it, we need to do it right. And then we talked about level services, right? All the citizens expect a level service out of our city, what does that mean to us? And then I hear certain things of, you know, the city's gonna make hard decisions, budget reductions, cuts, outsourcing, level services, a million dollar out of budget. Fox Hollow, I'm just gonna make this real easy, come talk to us in 2027, because that's when the bond is done, right? We've been through this enough times that that is when we need to discuss Fox Hollow. Roads first scenario, Ben, I'll tell ya, I went and did a little bit of research with Denise, and she, I probably drove her crazy with the figures. And I printed up a little thing here, and I'll even give you a copy tonight.
Love one.
And it talks about, Scott put in here, 1 million, 10, 10 employees. And, you know, we keep hearing these things of, our general budget has fluff in it. You know, even after last year, we went through and had the departments go and make the one-time reduction, we found $130,000, and some people may just laugh that off. Well, that's a lot to our, to our citizens, to our staff, in level service, what that means. And so I just took a very, very conservative number, $2 million, because that seems to be associated with the fluff in our budget, with administrative fees, or if you're gonna rob Peter to pay Paul, vice versa, right? You've gotta make up that $2 million somewhere if you cut administrative fees, 'cause that $2 million is people. It's simple as that. And it's level services. So when you go and cut $2 million out of our budget, it's close to 14% of our budget. And what does that mean? That means 20 full-time employees. Then if we say, hey, we're gonna take the roads first scenario, but we're also gonna follow our core services that we owe our citizens, like maybe public safety, fire, police, I don't know how many employees that includes, I bet it's close to 40 or 50 employees. How many full-time employees do we have in the city? 100, 104? 110. So if you take out half of the, our public safety, you know, employees, 40, 50 of them, now you're talking 20 employees out of maybe 50 or 60. That's gonna impact our city a great deal. You know, you can have a smile on your face all you want when we talk about this, but it infects the level service that we have to our citizens that they've come to expect, that they've went out and bonded for, for the rec, that they voted for, to our street maintenance, to our, I mean, it just goes on, library, the amount of people that are affected there, the, the moms and the kids that are, come there and they learn. They learn from the great employees that we have at the library. And so when I hear this, what I call fence sitting, and we hear of, I'm gonna advocate for so many different ways to fund our roads, I call it fence sitting. Because that's exactly what it is, when you say, we need to do it, and I'm sorry, Ben, scenario number seven is not gonna get you there. It's just not gonna get you there. If we're looking for 3.8, it's not gonna get there.
But it's the better model.
That's your opinion. It's just, and then when I hear, you know, the city gets, and I know, there's a, there's a thing out there that wants to make certain council members look bad, so be it. But if you look at our road expenditures, Class C expenditures since, I don't know, you go back to 2011, maybe it's unfair to even show that, that's $94,000. 2012, $36,000, pitiful. 2013, $260,000. 2014, $547. 2015, another low number, 303. And then it starts going up, 2016, $612, to this year, we're gonna spend $1.8 million. 2019, we're projected to spend $1.8 million. When I hear that we're not spending money on roads, it's a lie. It's a flat-out lie that we, as, as a council who represent the citizens, are doing our best to represent you and put more money into the roads, and that's exactly why we've been elected. Not just for roads, for all levels of services. And that's what concerns me, is when we try to focus on just one issue, roads are very important, don't get me wrong. 1100, great example of where our roads have come to. We have more than just one ticket item in this city in level services, and we need to be very apparent to all those, to our citizens, because we represent all the citizens, all 36, or 37, or 38,000 dollars, nine dollars, residents of our city. What are we doing? Are we gonna throw everything else under the bus and just focus on roads? Well, I better hope, hope we're not. I hope we're focusing on all the departments and where we're going. Public safety, big key issue, what are you gonna do there? Are you gonna cut employees there? Then what do we have? So I, you know, Mayor, I've done a, a lot of research on this, whether, however you cut it, it comes down to employees, because employees make up a big, the biggest portion of our budget of where we're going in the city, because it's level services that we provide our citizens. You know, I just, I went out and printed, Marty sent me the roads that have been worked on since 2008. It's amazing, we're actually doing work, we're actually doing roads. He talked about it earlier, what roads we're focusing on this year. Wow, should we all fall down? It's a surprise, right? We're actually working on roads. But does that get out to the citizens on, through certain Facebook pages? No, because it wants to make us look bad. Is that the way we service our, our residents of this city? No, it is not how we focus on our citizens of this city. I bet you a lot of the citizens that follow a lot of those pages are just on there just to laugh, because just what they see. Now, let me show you, I just printed off just the last year and a half of other cities having problems. It's a fact. Guess what? Pleasant Grove roads just are not the only ones that suck. Other cities do. You know, Mapleton's, Provo's, Salt Lake City just came out with one, trying to figure out, how in the heck are they gonna pay for their large amount of roads? I think it was over 800, or maybe 1,000 miles of roads that they have? Good luck, right?
1,800 miles of road, and 2/3 of them are failing.
So when you go and look at it, you know, it's just a fact. We got a lot of our money from the Class C road funds, from the state legislature. You know, are we gonna have to rely on them anymore? I don't think we have to. I think that's why you're seeing cities step up and doing road fees, or whatever they can do to help, start helping their citizens on these level services like roads, because the state legislature just, they've shown us, they're not gonna do it. Or they've given us what they're gonna give us, and now, hey, cities, good luck, you're on your own now. It is, it's just a fact. And so, you know, this is just for a year and a half, it's a lot of pages worth of information here. So it's just, it's sad that we, we've come to this, that we are, and we need to fix it. Sorry, that's my rant.
Thank you. Okay, did anyone else wanna chime in here? All right, so 3.8 million, I did some math, I hope this is accurate. You had up there that if we stayed at the status quo, it'd be 1.5 in 2019?
Yep.
Okay, fiscal year 2019. So 1.5...
Another 2.3.
You need 2.3 million. And according to the budget reduction numbers here, at the 70/30 rate, $2 million is 20 full-time people and $570,000 in cuts, in operating cuts.
Wait, is that in addition to the 325,000 that's already being, so that, so then we're close to almost a million dollars from the general fund?
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that question.
They said, yeah, so what...
325, we're already putting in...
I think the total funding is 1.5.
Right, but, but the cuts you're talking about would be in addition?
I'm, I'm, I'm trying to use the numbers at a high level, that Eric just outlined...
But I just wanna make sure that if we're, if what you're talking about, we have to add in what's already been contributed by the city, which is another 325,000.
In 2019, it'll be 1.5.
But I'm going specifically from the general fund, just because of off this sheet, we're taking 285,000 from...
Yeah, that's in here.
So this number says...
So $2 million...
So it's 2.325 million.
Right.
So that would be 20 full-time employees, and the 285 times 2 is 570. So if, if it came to that, that would be the cut. You need 3.8, 3.8 minus 2 is 1.8, right? We, we were talking about how much in the revenue side of this, in the new, new monies?
So, well, there's, so there's a couple things. If we're gonna take general fund money on a yearly basis, that's a little bit different than what you're talking about here as far as general fund. So really, our, our two streams are general fund out of the budget, or a road fee, or a combination of both.
Right.
So if our, if we're taking 2 million out of the general fund budget, we only need 300 more thousand of a road fee to get this set.
Correct, right. That means that you're only asking the citizens for 300,000, but you're going to cut...
20 jobs.
Yeah, what percentage of the workforce is that?
Just under, just a little under 12%.
About 20% of the workforce, and $570,000 of operational money? And if, what's the general fund now?
Our, our total general fund's 13 million.
13, so if you take 30% of 13, what's 30% of 13?
390,000.
So you're talking about, so you're talking about a significant chunk of money out of both people and operations, which means, across the board, you're gonna have services falling off. So I think at a high level, again, council, is that what you wanna do? Are you, are you looking at that drastic of a cut?
No.
Because if not, let's just move down the list until we get to a point where we can say, yeah, that's the number, now, now we have a number that we can work with.
If we're talking at a high level, Mayor, the assumptions that this budget reduction analysis are predicated upon may not hold as you grow the number, it may not be as creative as the solutions could be, and they aren't the end of the discussion. There's always the possibility of creating some additional fees, or some taxes, or some other means to fund things that we would hypothetically lose if we vetted that analysis. And so...
For example?
Yeah, for example.
So you could, you could fully fund roads out of city budgets. Say, this is gonna be our highest priority, and we're gonna fund our roads first, it's been neglected, like the mayor was pointing out at the start of this meeting, to a tune of 2.3 million dollars. No other fund in the city has ever been neglected that badly for that long. Time to get some reallocation and reprioritization to match the overwhelming desires of the public. Fund our roads first. We task our directors and our city administrator to say, what does this look like? If we fully fund our roads, we have to come up with another 2.3 million dollars, what is that gonna look like? And they say, well, we thought it might be 20 jobs gone, we've looked at it, and there's actually several memberships and organizations that have been heavily investigated by the state auditor in recent months. Maybe we could exit out of some of these associations that we belong to, maybe we could reexamine some of our organizational structuring, maybe we could reassess whether some of our various perks could be trimmed, maybe we give less free rec passes to certain people, we do a whole host of different analyses so that we only have 10 jobs that we might lose. But we say, you know what, that could be... But we say, 'You know what? That could be five jobs in one department, and three jobs in another department, two jobs in this other department.' And we don't wanna lose those jobs. They're doing tremendous work for us, and our citizens love those. So let's do a fee to save those jobs." And go to our citizenry and say, "Hey, we don't wanna lose anybody out of any of these departments, because they're, they're fantastic."
Let me help the discussion here.
So, so I guess my point is, funding roads first is not the end of the analysis or the end of the process.
Right. So, so let's, let's see if we can think at the high level here, because that's what we are supposed to be doing. We need 3.8 million. How much of this is going to come from the general fund? And how much of this is going to be asked from citizens and businesses to, to spend?
Out of the 2.3, right?
Am I, am I missing something?
Yeah.
No, I think you're right. But I guess the way I would characterize it is, one option is to say, "All of it comes out of the general fund." But then, we supplement the general fund, so it's a larger amount, by figuring out, by giving the citizenry a chance to say, "Yes, that is a service I do not wanna see diminished." And this is one we can't save by outsourcing or reallocating, or figuring out some efficiencies that didn't exist before. And so to save it, we're gonna pitch in another 20 bucks a month to save that, and that, and that, and that service that we love, because they are high priorities for us, but not as high as our highest priority, which is the roads, that have been so long neglected, if that makes sense.
But I think, I think your explanation makes sense. I understand what you're saying. What I'm looking for here is the council to tell me, do they agree with this process? Or do they wanna take a different approach? Because we need to move the discussion forward. And so, we have 3.8 million in needs. If we do nothing, we end up with 1.5 million a year after next. Next June, next July, right?
Yeah, that's right.
Next July, it starts being 1.5, which means we have a 2.3,
2.3 million dollars.
3.3 million dollar hole. How do you want to carve up the 2.3? How much of it do you want to try to take out of general fund? Versus how much of it do you want to try to go and ask the public and the businesses for? I mean, am I being too simplistic here? Because unless, to me, I mean, unless you start with that kind of a bold objective, you don't get very far. You don't solve the problem.
I'd like to go to one of the scenario, well, I'd like to, when we, if we decide to go to the public, offer them two options. One is fully funding at 3.8 million a year, and the other is the escalated amounts, and give them the choice of whether they wanna go full board from day one, or if they wanna see an estimated amount, be able to budget through several years. So I'd like to see probably scenario 10, or 9, I'm sorry. It was, I was thinking scenario 10, Eric.
So two scenarios?
Two scenarios. Scenario 9, which is the full board amount. And then, I'm flexible on what another scenario is. I like keeping the general fund money to 25 or 50,000, because we're already contributing 325,000. And there are other needs in the city. Yes, road is a major priority. But we can't stop servicing every other thing in the city. And, I mean, people, you think they're gonna riot now against roads. When you start cutting programs and services and facilities in the city, you better, you better bet they're gonna be coming out for that, too. This is my hometown. I've lived here my whole life. I participate in these programs, these services. People live in Pleasant Grove for these reasons.
Right.
And if you cut everything else, you better dang well bet they're gonna be just as mad about that. So I'd like to give them the option, though, to fully fund or do an escalated amount over that time. That would, that's my opinion.
Okay. Thank you. Now, the question is, we need 2.3 more million. How do you wanna split that? In your, in your view of, of saving the services that are already being provided, do you want the 2.3 to be 100% new money? Do you want it to be part of it in cutting general fund, and then new money? Do you have an idea?
I, I think we start with, we're all, because we're already contributing the 325,000 from the general fund. I would like to go to the public with, as it stands right now. If we wanna add an additional $25,000 from the general fund to make this 350,000, I think that's a, a good contribution from the city and from our departments that they've given us. So I would, I would suggest adding an additional $25,000 from the general fund and ask the public for the remaining amount. I think that's the hybrid of city, community, and the state.
Okay, let me translate this. 3.8 million minus the 1.5, which takes into account the additional general fund money that's currently being put in. If you add the 25,000, you're now at 2.275 that's needed in new money. Is, is that right?
Well, yeah, if we're just talking about fiscal year 19.
Right. Is that what you're?
Correct.
Well, what I was hearing Sid say is that we, there's kinda two things. One, we show the option where it gets all funded in 2019. The other one is an escalated
Correct.
to where we reach the 3.8 in six or seven years.
Correct.
Yeah, and I think the escalated one, that's fine. We can put that out there. My question was, what is the fully funded one?
For the fiscal year 19.
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out, what, what is the fully funded one?
And right now, according to.
I think we have the, the scenario for the, the scaled one.
Well, the, the fully funded includes 25,000 general fund new money to, to get to the 3.8.
Yeah. Um, we're short, we're short 2.275.
Well, that's if we include the road fee from the community.
Right. Your, what's the total amount on that being raised?
Well, this, again, is an escalation, I see you're saying. So it's an escalation over 3.5.
So it's, it's, I think it's like a hundred, 120-something thousand short, is that right? It's 3.6-something? I'm, I'm not trying to split hairs, I just wanna get to the.
Are you talking about scenario 9?
Yes.
Yeah, it's about, it's about 100,000 short.
About 100,000 shy, okay. So that could be the, the scaled one. Back to the, the fully funded one, how much of the 2.3 is the council comfortable with trying to get out of the general fund versus going to the public and the businesses and asking them for the 2.3? Understand the question?
Yes, I do very well. I think I expressed, expressed my opinion on that, so.
So my, my, my interpretation is zero additional from the general fund.
Because we already have worked into these scenarios amount coming out of the general fund.
In the 1.5, there is already general fund money. Okay.
According to, and, and whatever else, where we're giving the 3.325,000.
Right. That's in there, in the 1.5. Okay. Diana?
So did we do a, on scenario number 9, did we do a escalator? Where does the escalator on the new money?
There's a, so there's not an escalator on the new money. It's just, it's 25,000 additional each, each budget year. So by the time you reach fiscal year 23, you now have 450,000 in general fund money going in. And your road fee is about $2 million. We got 2.4 at that point.
Was that your question?
Well, my, my question is, is a percentage of increase on the new money?
I think, I think that's in there. The, on line 128, the general fund base grows from 325 to 450 over five years, no, seven years. What's the number?
Six years.
Six years. No, it's five years, okay.
But that's on the general fund. I'm talking about new money.
The new money would be line 129. There is not an escalator in there. Did you wanna see an escalator in there?
Well, I think if everything else is escalating.
There's an escalator on the road fee, but not the, not the new money.
I know.
So.
Well, on, on Ben's. Yeah, well, this is what Ben suggested, was that there's a 5% increase on the new money every year. So we start with 100,000, general fund, and that goes up 5%.
I'm interested in that conversation.
Okay.
That's, the scenario 7 is the only one that has an escalator on new money. Everything else is either just a flat rate every year of 25, 50, or 100.
So if you, if you took it 5%, and it was 25,000, take, take the increase and divide it by 4? Am I close?
Well, are, are you talking about this, this here?
Yes.
And adding a 5% escalator on that?
Yeah. If you go back to item number 7, and just divide those numbers by 4?
Uh, yeah, it'd get you pretty close. It's 5% on the 100,000's different than 5% on 25,000. It'd get you pretty close. I'm no math major.
No, neither am I.
But it's not gonna be, it wouldn't be enough to.
Probably, it probably is not gonna be a large dollar amount.
5% on 25,000's not gonna, that's not gonna be a large amount.
It won't, it won't take off 100,000.
Well, and the, the beauty of the transportation fee, honestly, is that we can have a conversation annually about it, because, you know. So if we do get more money, it's a very simple, simple conversation of saying, "Hey, we got some more new money that we didn't know we were gonna have." And I think we are gonna see some growth in that. We have seen a lot of growth in our sales tax revenue, just in the last couple of years, anyway, so.
Right now, I'm seeing 2.3 is the, the needed amount. I'm hearing a definite zero additional from the general fund.
Already what we're doing, yes.
Okay. So the 2.3 would be completely new money in terms of like a road fee or a tax or something? Do we have anybody else that has comfort with something different than zero additional from the general fund off the 2.3?
Yes, I have comfort with something very different.
Yes. I'm aware of that.
I would, I would take, you know, if you wanted one of these scenarios, I'd take a scenario 7, and then increase the number so we hit the full 3.8 by multiplying that by a factor and make that our scenario 10. If we wanted to do the cleanest, simplest approach, we would fully fund our roads first, and then make sure that we have no cuts or losses of any kind by asking for the citizens to see if they're willing to support whatever it would take to save whatever we might lose if we were to do that fully funding first, and, and match our priorities of the city with the priorities of the public.
Okay, how many of you are in agreement with, with that approach? Do you wanna try that approach?
That's not what my people are saying.
Okay, so I'm having four people that are saying, "We don't wanna try that approach." Thank you. I think you're creative. It's good thinking. Moving on from that approach, we need 2.3 million. Now I feel like an auctioneer. We need 2.3 million, and I'm looking for how much of this is going to come from the general fund in addition to the amount that we've already identified, so that it can be fully funded on, on the first year that we discuss this with the public as opposed to five years later.
That's a good question.
Yes.
Um, are you talking about the general fund new money, adding to that, to come up, make up that?
Yeah, so here's, here's what I mean. We are currently putting in, thank you. We're currently putting in 325,000, am I got that right?
Yep.
Of general fund money each year into the road fee, or into roads. When you add that with the Class C road funds and the gasoline tax, and you take out the bond, so it's clear from, from debt, you're putting 1.5 million a year.
You're gonna have to increase that to 100,000, yeah, 103.
So, so the question is, if you're, if you're getting 1.5, and you need 3.8, you're shy 2.3. And so I'm looking for 2.3.
So we have to, to qualify that, though. I think we have to work with the study that's been done, too, to work within that study to find a, a solution to what you're looking for.
The, the study, I mean, you guys pick a number, and then you back the, you can back into what the numbers are to the residents.
Using the formula.
Yeah.
Back into it.
So the formula, the formula from the Burningham study comes after the question about, do you want to try to take more general fund money and assign it to roads? Then whatever's left, you take and apply the formula to. And that's what gets discussed with the public.
Yeah, I mean, I could give you an example. So if, if between this one and this one, we need 2.3 million, and let's say, we were gonna cut 300,000 out of the budget in some manner, and then $2 million of a road fee, just double your numbers here. Sorry. Double these numbers, that's, that's your 2 million on the road fee. So the residents are now up to 980 per month. The businesses would be at $120.40 a month.
That would be on day one?
That would be on day one, yep.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
And the city would be at 300.
But if we did the,
On that new money.
If we broke the business into three different categories, that formula is on 8.
Yeah, so then you just double those.
Right. So that would be just for new money? You're applying the formula to figure out how much you, how much each business or home is gonna pay?
Down there, that bottom line, the business monthly charge?
Right.
So you would just be doubling those, right?
And the question is,
Double those.
On line 113 in this example, or up at the top example, you need a number, or you don't put a number? What I heard Eric saying is, "We've already got a number, and it's 385."
325.
325, thank you. Do you wanna add more to that? Lynn is saying no. Eric is saying no. What about you two? No? No.
So just another question. We are kinda, if we do one of these scenarios, let's say we chose number 9, you are adding to it, you're adding 25.
Yeah.
You are adding 25,000 to it, but it doesn't get you to where you, what you're talking about.
Chris is asking if we're fully funded on that day. That means we would need to take some money out of the current budget, out of the general fund. How much is the council willing to say, "Take X amount, and everything else will be done with the fee"?
I, I wanna, I wanna put it out there to the public, and let them come in. I mean, as it stands right now with these scenarios, let's just put it out there. And if they come back and say, "We don't wanna fully fund right now," or "We want to," or, I mean, let's just see what.
But you haven't given them
Well.
a number to that.
I, I'm going off of, well.
It's fully funded.
I'm going off of scenario 9 for the.
You would have, in order to make it fully funded, you'd have to take fiscal year 2023,
And put it there.
Add another 100 grand, is that what you said? 100,000, and move it six years forward.
Yeah, so ordered, I think to the mayor's point, so here, we've added $125,000 of general fund money. So now we're up to 450. So we, we've only added 125, though, because the 325 is already built into the base. So we've added 125,000 of, of general fund money, and the road fee is now just over 2 million.
Let me borrow this. I'm just gonna walk up here, sorry.
And so that's what the residents would pay, if this were, if this were to be moved over here?
This number here, 3.697, just call it 3.7.
Needs to go to fiscal year 18.
Over six years. Call them and change it, bring it over here.
To 19.
That is a fully funded plan on day one. So the question is, are you comfortable with 450 and 25,000 additional? So 475 coming out of general fund on day one, or do you want some other number?
I don't think we can afford 475. We just talked about 570, and we had a heart attack.
Well, but in this case, this is only 125,000 of money above, above and beyond the 325.
Above and beyond the 325.
Yeah, so we go back here. This number that plugs in here is now 125.
So you're saying it's no big deal, Scott?
That's what I was just gonna say. Recognize how hard it was to get 130 last year.
I'm just trying to clarify.
Okay.
So what, what you're saying is, we now are pulling 125,000 out of the general fund?
Additional.
Additional than what we've done in the past. And then the road fee is?
Additional.
The 2 million dollars.
Right, so just throw number 9 up there again.
Okay.
Just to be clear, just take column 23 and move it, you know, FY 23, and bring it up to next year. July 1, 2019, or 18, sorry, 2018, which is the beginning of the fiscal year 2019. Right? You've gotten rid of the bond, and that would be the numbers coming out of the general fund. Is that what you're comfortable with doing? If not, you gotta change that 450 and increase the road fee, because you need 2.3 million.
Right, which would still require us to chop 125,000 out of the budget.
Right.
What's, what was our, what's our projected new money for next year?
Total?
In the trend that we have been following?
Is that scenario 1?
Well, no, she's just saying, overall, for our general fund, what are we projecting?
Ah, okay. From the budget discussion that we had last month, or was it this month? Beginning of this month?
Beginning of this month, February 7th and 8th.
Thank you.
375.
Is projected new?
Yeah.
So it'd be an additional 75? What, what is it?
375.
375.
So it'd be another 75 to reach the 450?
Yeah, if we took 125 off the top of that, we're, yeah, we're making. we're, yeah, we're making some changes.
Making some changes.
Yeah, it's gonna affect, it's gonna affect people and service.
So you still have my vote.
Yeah, I understand where you're from. I understand where Lynn's from. I understand where Ben's at. I'm trying to understand where, where we are together as a, as an overall council.
Okay, so tell me what my commercial looks like broken up into the four scenarios. If we take 23.
If you, if you look at scenario nine, let's just stay with nine.
Also, but I'm looking at the breakdown of the trips.
You wanna see this number?
Right, so what is?
Oh, I didn't, I didn't put the escalator in on that one.
No, so I'm saying on trips, if we go number nine with the, the businesses broken, broken up into the three different categories, what does that look like?
So that, so what happens is.
So those are the same?
Yeah, the, the revenue actually decreases slightly when we do this. It decreases 33,000 a year.
Okay, so it's more than that. So 20, 30 would be what?
So fiscal year 23?
No. On my trips, in the first category of businesses, my two, what is it, two to four? I can't remember what it, oh, two trips. Says right on there. In scenario number nine, fiscal year 23, what do those three numbers of trips look like for the businesses?
That's a variation on the theme that you haven't run yet.
Yeah, I'd have to run that.
Yeah. It's, it's going to be higher than what you see right there.
Right. But I wanna know about how I am.
They're gonna have to run it to be able to see it. What, what we're looking at is, it's a very real possibility under that scenario. You're not adding anything new from the general fund, so it is gonna go to a new fee. And, and two of you have said yes, one of you said no. So it's at a high level. What are you willing to do? Which way?
Number nine.
You're more interested in?
New money and.
New money.
New money and. Yeah.
Okay. Sid, how about you? Are you thinking in addition to the 325 and the 25, would you wanna put anything else in?
Not, not above the 25.
Okay.
In addition to the 325.
So let me just make sure I'm, I'm following you guys. Ben, you'd like to take the fund it first approach and then we would look at readdressing priorities on everything that's outstanding at that point. So what is currently funded would be defunded and we'd either have to re-justify it or ask people to pay for those services again. Okay?
Fairly state.
Okay, Lynn? I think you're saying, whatever we're paying today, 325, everything else would be new money. Okay? And?
Correct.
Are you the same? Okay, so everything would be new money. Okay, so 325 is what we're currently estimating we're getting out of the general fund. So everything, the two-point whatever would be new money. Okay? And you're saying the same? And what are you saying? Same? Okay. All right, so we have a scenario. What we need is for you to rerun scenario number nine. Probably oughta put the escalator in there, but start off with the 325 and everything else drops into the road fee. Okay? And it's the goal of hitting 3.8 in fiscal year 2019. That make sense? Okay? Tell me in your own words what I just said so that we know that we're on the same page.
What you've asked is that there is no more new money. So I have the 1 million, I have 180, 325, and then everything.
The total will equal 3.8, right? Okay.
It'll be a 2.3 million dollar road fee.
It'll be 2.3 million, yeah, basically. Then there'll be an escalator. If we put, if you put the escal, if you put the escal, let me just ask. If you put the escalator in, there's the possibility that the new money could decrease over time. Right? By whatever you increase the escalator by.
Correct.
With the escalator, you're talking about general fund.
Talking about general fund having, like you did there, the 25, 5%, whatever it was that you were gonna add in there as a growth factor each year.
But, but we're gonna leave the escalator also in the general fund-based budget that will grow as well as it's shown right here, correct?
Well, on 2019 scenario, there's not gonna be.
Yeah.
Yeah, it'll be just 20. Yeah. And then it'll go from there.
But we have another scenario, which would be similar to scenario nine, if that's what these are.
Correct.
Correct. So in, in the two scenarios that you requested, the first one would be 3.8 in fiscal year 2019. The second one would be 3.8 in fiscal year 23. And so you're just backing into it. It's either fiscal year 19 or 23.
I, I also, if we're gonna, I also wanna leave on there what we already presented to the public last year, which was the 1 million.
Well, this presented to the public did not account for any general fund. So there's not a scenario, it just accounted for.
That's scenario 25.
Actually, it is.
But I think where that's what we presented last year and had a public hearing on that, we, you know, we, we let the public know that that's an option, but if you want the roads fixed faster and more at a faster rate, then here's these two other options. I mean, like Diana said, let's give them three options. And, but I do think one should be what we've already presented to the public. I mean.
Yeah, and, and so to follow up on that, what was presented to the public was this with the million dollar road fee.
Okay.
Pretty much right across. We didn't discuss.
New money.
Well, we didn't discuss any general fund money. We did not, in that letter, did not discuss how the 5% of the tax increase would be. And so again, what we presented to the public was really a snapshot. It said, it's 2.5, here's what we would do.
Scott, if you present that option, you need to stretch out the years long enough to hit the 3.8.
Correct.
Well, so when we, when we rolled it out to the public, we did a, that was.
Right, did we tell the public that, that the, that the need was 3.8?
In the letter, yes.
Okay, but we only showed them a plan to get us to 1.5? 2.5? Okay, so we kinda need to show them the rest of the picture, how it gets to 3.8. Otherwise, we are falling painfully behind over a very long period of time.
Well, you can put on there at the top, painfully behind.
Yeah. Thank you. Council, how long will it take you guys to put this together?
We can't ready next week.
Okay, let's do that.
But on all the scenarios, can you please break down the, the commercial into the three different groups? Okay.
Y'all wanna see just three commercial breakouts or do you wanna have it?
Flat.
As a flat number?
I mean, I like it as it is, but I would also like to see that option. So option 32.
Oh, so mayor, I'm interested.
I mean, I would like to see that.
Your trips are completely different than a, than a dental office.
Or a gas station.
I can tell you how many trips I generate. I did the math while we were sitting here.
So, would you like to be in, like, like businesses as opposed to being also included as a dental? I don't know that the dental office wants to be included with Water Gardens.
So rather than asking what Water Gardens wants, I think it's what's best for the citizens of the city?
Yes.
Because they're the only ones that vote. Water Gardens doesn't have a vote.
I know. I know that every business does not have a vote here. But what I'm, I am very, very concerned with a flat commercial fee because businesses are different. I understand that a dental office is not the same as Macy's or a grocery store. I do not like the flat commercial fee. That's what I'm saying.
And I would agree with that. I mean, the more you stratify, the less likely you are of having to leave the challenge.
I am going to recuse myself from answering that question. So I can remain objective on the target of 3.8 and just move forward.
Well, then I will recuse myself as well.
Okay. So, so let's go ahead and, and have you go ahead and put together those scenarios.
He will.
I think you're up to six now?
I've got four.
Four?
I don't want mine, the multiplier on seven for an intellectual, I want that for an intellectual exercise.
Okay. And you'll have this for us by next week?
Scott, can you also include if we were to prioritize the roads first and cut everything out, like, just reduce and? I'd like to see what that looks like.
Say that again?
Put the roads, put the roads as fully funded, everything and, and nothing else. So as Ben's suggesting, the roads, like, nothing else in the city, just roads. And see what that looks like.
For the record, that is not what Ben's suggesting.
Okay. Can you?
Gross mischaracterization of what Ben's suggesting.
It's no scenario on there. Well, Ben, can you reiterate what you're saying?
Yes, I think what Sid's asking for, and I think this would be a great exercise, is what would the scenario look like if we were to fully fund roads out of the general fund as our highest priority? And then assess what would need to be funded through citizen initiative or citizen request as a tax increase to save other things so there is nothing cut or anything lost? What would that scenario look like?
Well, I guess I'm kinda looking for something that you did right here where it was full-time, like, the number of positions and operational budgets. And if you, because that, that helped me see that on paper when it was actual positions and budget funding. So if you do that, fully funding the roads and then?
But we, we have that. I mean, I think that's what Eric requested.
Yeah, I have that. Okay, perfect.
We just, well, tweak it and then send it out to everybody.
Okay.
That'd be great.
But that, you'll include that with the numbers that?
Scenario, all that does is move that number to 2.3 million and that number to zero.
But you can put that on paper, how many positions and?
Yeah, but we can show you in the general fund.
But it, it will be how many positions, but it won't be specific.
That, no, that's fine. That's fine, yeah.
It would be good to have, yeah, kind of, if we could get it a little more specific to say, this is the, this is the judgments that staff would propose. If that makes sense? To say, this is what we would ask the public to fund.
Hang on, we're getting, we're getting way down the line. We don't even know yet what these top-level scenarios are that we asked for looks like.
Fair enough.
We're not even, we're not even at the point yet where we know how much, how much we're asking for. And, and they've already got four that they have to run. Plus, plus the variations on the business part of this, so.
Fair enough.
I think we need to see that before we take that next step and start saying, okay, library, you just lost 10 people, right? Because nobody likes library anyway, right? Isn't that what we're really saying?
But, but I guess that's my point, is a claim's being made and I would like to see the numbers behind that claim to see if that's even a possible scenario. Because if it's not, then we need to stop making the claim.
Would have to be funded some other way. That's the reality. They'd have to be funded some other way. They wouldn't be lost necessarily.
It's not even something that the council has considered or discussed. It's not something that the staff has considered or discussed. And it usually takes a while to put together the, the annual budget. I mean, you're kinda asking for a redo of the budget under those scenarios, right? Which we know that's what you're asking.
Prioritizing roads first in our budget.
Okay, but, but the council kinda said no.
Right.
So let's move on. Okay. All right, are we good? Any, any other input?
Can I just recap what I think?
No. Yeah, go ahead.
Well, let's do it fully funded day one to get the 3.8. Perfect.
So Scott only went clarification on the first scenarios that you said it was no general fund money? I think it's no new general fund money.
Right.
Okay. Okay, are we good?
Well, I, I would just like, Ben, I'm open to, to options. But I think it's time, if you wanna put the pen to the paper and come back with some written plans, I'm willing to look at that. But right now, it's just, we're just talking about it and I, you know, I know you presented these scenarios, scrutinize the budget, zero-based budget, these different things. If you wanna put the pen to the paper and show me something on paper that I can, you know, review and discuss, that would be helpful. But otherwise, I, I don't know, I think it's just, it's just talk. But if you have an idea of how to do all these things that you're suggesting, if you wanna bring that forth, then I'm happy to look at that.
Thanks, I do. I have lots of ideas and I think that that's an option that we ought to pursue. In fact, if I could make a comment, mayor, to the public that are here, to the folks watching at home, it has been wisely observed that the highest office in the land is the office of the citizen. If you would like to see roads funded first, if you would like to see an approach that forces the city to have priorities that match the priorities of the public, the overwhelming evidence I have seen is that three-quarters of the city, if not more, believe we should put roads as the highest priority and should fund it first. There are mechanisms like initiatives and referendums to be the ones that drive your city to get to the results, the results you'd like to see so that we're moving our city forward in positive and good ways. And so you do have options.
Is there a date that we can get that in paper from you or in writing? Is there a date that you feel comfortable presenting that to us?
Be happy to present something in writing next week.
Okay, that would be great.
Okay, let's move on to item eight, which is review and discuss the March 7 city council meeting. Scott?
We have a guy by the name of Chris Nelson who requested to come and talk about a fundraiser 5K event they're doing that he wanted to approach, or just promote, I guess. I don't think he's asking us for anything, just wanted to come and let us be aware. And then the Recreation Center has recently done some rebranding and they have a new logo and we'd like the council to take a look at it before they start printing hundreds of them, so. We have a public hearing on a rezone and Ken can give us the details on this one.
Okay, let's skip forward here. All right. So, uh, last fall, we had the Savage Estates up on the north one-hundred-eighth come forward. They have come, they have purchased an additional property just south of what they've already been approved for. So, let's see, do we have a pointer here? Oh, there was one. Okay. Well, as you can see, the outlined in red property is the additional new property that they are wanting to add to their subdivision. So we have approved plats for this area and for this area up here, and the zoning to match. So it was approved to change the zone on here and here to R-120 from the RR. They would like to add this little piece to this subdivision here. So first, that would require changing it again from RR to R-120. So that's what their proposal is. The next item following that is just to amend this plat to include three additional lots here, and then, including actually this one, so vacating it from the existing, because of the road alignment, we just need to change the boundary on that lot just a little bit, so that, that will actually join the subdivision.
Okay. Any questions? All right.
Sure. Yeah, so I'm, I'm not sure which one is the next plat.
Savage Estates, Pla-8.
Okay. So, so that is this, uh, one that we just talked about. So the new plat, again, will include these two areas here in what was already approved. So it will, uh, and this is the overall of the project. So this is what was approved previously, and this is what we're looking at now. So adding this one-acre piece here, uh, and changing the road alignment a little bit here, so we now just have a little bit different shape on these properties. And then just a little teeny bit added on to this one here, that's why we're bringing it into this plat. But the overall density is not being increased in the area, it still meets the R-120 zone with some lot size averaging.
Any questions? It, it looks pretty good, really, with the additional larger lots.
Yeah.
Okay?
And Manila Creek, Ken, Pla-... B? Oh, sorry, that was the first one we had on there. Okay. So, uh, also last year, we had this area, which is now divided up into three different development companies, uh, up in the Manila area. So, uh, in other words, the, the former Alpine School District property that, uh, they came in and, and asked for a rezone to R-120, that was denied, so it still is the RR zone, but it's split up into three different development properties here. So the one that we're looking at, uh, here is, uh, the southernmost piece, twelve-point-three-two acres, and, uh, this is the plat for that. So it ties into the existing roadways and the development plan for the other two plats, uh, roadways tie in there. So, that's it. Meets the RR zone with, again, uh, some lot size averaging.
Pretty standard stuff. Any questions on that? Marty's got the next three.
Uh, the, we have the, the evac truck decamp facility, so we have the notice of, uh, of award, actually, the, the agreement to be signed, the notice to proceed, they're gonna start on that project. So that's the item C. Item D is we did a budget amendment last week to include a little bit more budget to be able to do the additive alternate on the bid, and so this is the change order to add, so they're doing the complete bid project. So that's C and D, and then E is to sign the agreement and notice to proceed for what you approved tonight, the notice of award, so they can start on that project on Blackhawk Waterline.
And you also have the structural improvements?
Oh, yes. Dion can probably explain it, but I'm gonna explain it, because he's gonna be on next week, but... I'll explain it.
Sure.
Yeah, actually, I gotta turn that on, Dion. We're gonna hear from you.
So...
So we, uh, come to council a few months ago for the structural repairs on the Lions Center floor. Uh, we had a couple bidders last week come out, and that will close Friday. Um, and we'll be coming to you for approval of, of that, awarding of that bid and notice to proceed.
So that's what item F will be?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. We're gonna modify it, then?
Yes.
That's about it in director's meeting.
Okay.
There'll be updated language, shown in accurate, picture of what's gonna happen.
Okay? Thanks. Anything else on that one, Deo?
No.
Okay.
Mayor, we also have a couple RDA items next to...
Yeah.
Okay, you got them.
So, yeah, then we adjourn from, uh, council meeting and reconvene as the RDA.
Yeah, so the RDA, this is the creation of the, uh, project area for the Grove Tower project. Oops. So one of it's the creation of the area, and then the other one is just the interlocal agreement that we enter into between the city and the redevelopment agency. So Randy Sant will be here to explain those to us.
Okay. All right. Any, any other items for next week?
That's it.
All right. Let's go around. Ken?
Just wanted to mention, uh, we are planning on doing a presentation of the results of the general plan survey on, not this next week, but on the fourteenth. We'll kind of break it down, and then from there, if there are cross-tabulations or whatever that you'd like to see, so people of age twenty-five who lived in Old Fort voted, uh, yes or no to this question, we can do that. I mean, there's so many thousands of different variables, it's impossible for us to do all of those upfront, but we'll, we'll show you what, uh, what the basic answers are, and we can come back with further analysis.
Okay. You wanna give us a sneak peek, like, how many responses?
Six-hundred-and-seventy-five responses. Um, again, I think I mentioned earlier, but there was a lot of response in favor of roads being a priority, um, but...
Great.
We'll get in more detail.
Thank you. Sherry? Nothing? Okay. Tina? You have a cold? Okay.
It's bad. Cold is bad.
Scott has a cold, too.
Janie, save yourself. Sherry, run.
Me, too.
Okay. Libby? Okay. You have a cold, too.
No.
Denise?
I don't.
Nothing.
This Thursday's the chamber lunch.
Okay.
If you haven't, uh, received an email from Josh yet, I think he's reached out, there was some issue with some email servers, but, um, if you didn't know that, that's gonna happen in this Thursday.
Is that Dave Crenshaw this Thursday?
Yeah. It's at the American Fork Hospital, their education room. It's a tri-chamber, so it's joint with the, uh, Lehigh area and the American Fork area chambers.
And the speaker is, uh, Dave Crenshaw. He wrote "The Myth of Multitasking." It's very, very good, very, very informative.
So it's a myth that you can't multitask?
Yeah.
Pull it off convincingly.
There's actually fun games where you find out, oh, gosh, I'm not, I'm, I'm not efficient.
That's all I got.
Okay. Deo?
I'll be out of town Monday through Wednesday next week to the, uh, Utah Cemetery Parks Conference, so...
Okay.
Marty, he's been helping us on that Lions floor, so he knows everything about it.
All right.
Too much.
Anything else?
No.
Okay.
Definitely.
Really, it's Mario that was doing all the work, and I just made sure they were going on the recreation, so...
We, we know that.
It's usually what happens, so...
Oh, gosh.
But, no, I'm doing great. So, no, we don't have any other items.
Kathy? No? Diana?
Um, yes, I'm actually gonna say something.
Okay. Should we brace ourselves?
Yeah. No, um, I, I want to say something, uh, about the accusation of being creative and helping, uh, Fox Hollow make more, more money. Um, I actually have, uh, I have personally helped increase Fox Hollow's, uh, revenue by bringing in, uh, golf tournaments. I'm actually very proud of that. Probably to the tune of about forty, fifty thousand dollars annually, and these are tournaments that are coming back. So when you make accusations, just know that there are council members who are working.
And it's much appreciated. I hope you don't think I made an accusation.
I think it was an accusation. And I took it personally, so...
Anything else?
Um, no.
Okay. Eric?
So, yes, we had, I think it's been about a week or a little more, the Fredette Foundation we had, so it's moving forward.
Good.
And, uh, hey, we're gonna have some good input on this next meeting. That's when things will start happening.
Excellent. Okay. Thanks. Then? Lynn? Okay.
One of the things I wrote about recently was that, uh, if we kick the can on roads, we might as well be taking six-thousand-three-hundred dollars of your money, putting it on this table and burning it every single day. Six-thousand-three-hundred dollars a day.